Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance?
To the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the judicial, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Claussen.
Here.
Hildebrandt.
Here.
Okay, before consent agenda, because we are swearing in a new member of the council, we will move to that item number twenty-nine, and we will have the swearing in of Andrew McCarthy as the new Ward Four City Councilperson. And doing the swearing in will be Brianna Durst, our city clerk.
May I just repeat my question? May I?
Aye.
Andrew McCarthy?
Andrew McCarthy.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska?
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion?
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of Ward Four City Councilmember?
Uh, perform the duties of the office of Ward Four City Councilmember?
According to law?
According to law.
And to the best of my ability?
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear?
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate?
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of any political party?
Nor am I a member of any political party.
Or organization?
Or organization.
That advocates the overthrow?
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States?
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state?
Or of this state.
By force or violence?
By force or violence.
And that during such time as I am in this position?
That during such time I am in this position?
I will not advocate?
I will not advocate.
Nor become?
Nor become.
A member of any political party?
A member of any political party.
Or organization?
Or organization.
That advocates the overthrow?
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States?
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state?
Or of this state.
By force or violence?
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Andrew. We have a seat up here for you. Very good. So now, we will do our second roll call of the night for newly placement.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Claussen.
Still here.
Hildebrandt.
Here.
All right, very good. Now, we will look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion at second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item number twenty-eight on the council agenda under special presentations. We'll now proceed with a town hall meeting to receive comments on the Northeast Nebraska Solid Waste Coalition budget and rates for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. And to lead that discussion, Randy Gates, our city finance officer.
Yes, thank you. According to the interlocal agreement with the Solid Waste Coalition, a town hall meeting is required to be held in the three largest communities each year to review the proposed budget and rates. Columbus and Fremont are the other two communities that have to have a town hall meeting. And then the agenda packet is the proposed budget for the fiscal year ending September thirty, two thousand twenty-two. It keeps the tipping fees down change to twenty-four dollars per ton, assuming the waste connections continues operation of the landfill with no fee increase. Balance forward increases over seven hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, going from about six point four million last year, almost seven point two million this year due to normal coalition operations. Use fees decrease slightly, about one percent, due to slight decrease in budgeted tonnage. We budget the tonnage we received in last full fiscal year, which would have been the nineteen twenty tonnage, and then we increase that six percent every year to cover any normal fluctuations or what abnormal fluctuations in tonnage, so we won't go over, overexpend the budget. And sometimes you do have some wide fluctuations in tonnage. For instance, when the flooding happened, a lot of flood debris got, flood waste got deposited in the landfill. So there's things that do cause some big fluctuations in tonnage, but this year there wasn't that much. Interest income decreases thirty-three thousand dollars because we're budgeting point one five percent for interest rate compared to point seven five percent last year. Personnel costs decree, increase four thousand dollars or point two five, four point two five percent. That includes a three percent COLA and normal merit increase. Disposal fees decrease slightly, about nine thousand dollars or a little less than one percent due to the decrease in tonnage I mentioned previously. Other professional fees decrease two hundred seventy-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars due to two hundred forty-eight thousand for engineering and legal services for the master plan, and thirty thousand for a tier-two study budget in the prior year. We're currently in the process of the master planning with Coalition Board. I hope one of the things that will come about from that is some changes into, in our agreements with Coalition, including the interlocal agreement. Perhaps we won't have to have an interlocal agreement next year if we get that taken out of the interlocal. That requires getting all Coalition community to sign off on that. But since landfill's been up and operational, we really haven't had any public input at these meetings since the late nineties. So I think that's kind of an obsolete provision that hopefully we can do away with and won't put you guys through listening to this next year. In capital outlay, there's three hundred thousand dollars for vertical and lateral permit modifications, and two hundred twenty thousand dollars for design and bid services for area six, phase one. The three hundred thousand dollars for permit modifications is related to the master plan I just referred to. The draft master plan we have now that we're considering would have both lateral and vertical expansion, which would require permit modification and major permit modifications. That's what that three hundred thousand dollars is for. That hasn't been cited upon yet, but if it is, if we decide to go through with that, then we'll have the money in the budget to pay for that major permit modification. Also included in gender packet is closure, post-closure care fund. This transfer from the operating fund increases slightly, a little less than one percent, and that's budgeted three hundred eighty-three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars this year. Total funds available for closure, post-closure increase seven point two four percent, going from nine point eight million last year to over ten and a half million this year. Approximately half of that increase is due to interest earnings and half due to the current year funding. That's the money we'll use as we go through and close the landfill. And then, once it's closed, we have to maintain it, have funding to maintain that for thirty years after closure. That's what those big dollars are for. Answer any questions?
Okay, thank you, Andy. Any questions?
Randy, just to refresh my memory, how many communities are involved?
I believe there's twenty-eight. Do you know, Rob, is that right? Twenty-four?
Twenty-four, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Technically, it's a town hall meeting, so anyone from the public wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, hearing no further discussion. Comments or questions? I think we can move on. Thank you, Andy. Takes us to our regular agenda. Item number thirty, we'd look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty, twenty-one dash thirty-three, adding stop signs to control all four directions at the intersections of Norfolk Avenue and Second Street and Norfolk Avenue and Third Street. And to hear some background on this?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, motion, I'm sorry.
I'll go ahead and do that, Josh. Make a motion for consideration, resolution number twenty, twenty-one dash thirty-three.
Second.
Motion. Motion at second, all right. And to kick off discussion on this, we'll hear from Chief Don Miller, Norfolk Police Division.
Mayor and council, I will also ask for some background from Steve Ramus. Engineering made a request to beg the traffic lights at Second and Third Street and Norfolk Avenue for a traffic study to determine the counts. My understanding is that the current traffic counts don't support a traffic light, so they want to evaluate if a stop sign is a better use of that, of that intersection. I believe he's, this had been discussed to, to beg them and put in four-way stops for approximately a year. Is that correct, Steve?
That's correct.
Okay. This came from engineering, so if there's any other specific questions, Steve can give us additional background on that.
Thank you, chief. Steve, do you want to add anything right now?
Yes, thanks, chief. For, for some time now, we've been looking at the traffic movements in downtown. We did a traffic, fairly comprehensive traffic study, traffic volume study about two and a half years ago, going into the redesign for Brosh Avenue. As a function of that, we evaluated the signals that are downtown, and we evaluate those from MUTCD based on two-way stop control intersections and four-way stop control intersections, and there's different warrants in there. We evaluated the eight-hour traffic warrant, the four-hour traffic movement warrant, and the peak hour traffic movement warrant, as well as the all-way stop control warrant. None of those met the warrant requirements that would tell you you'd need a signal there. So, and based on that, started to have conversations with downtown businesses through the vehicle parking district to discuss, you know, kind of why are these here? Are they needed, not needed? Was there support to beg them? I was informed that there was here, I don't know, four years ago, five years ago, an attempt to beg them. I think it was done fairly short-term, a couple months, and then that was removed. But in that downtown area, we do get a lot of traffic that's moving through. The way the signals are set up, you can move through the downtown area quite frequently without hitting a signal. We also get, you know, even though we've implemented a truck routes, we still do get some big egg trucks that roll through downtown on their way, way to the western, western side of the community. We've also reconfigured some of the parking down there. I know that was met with some mixed results, but it did push the rear of the vehicles out a little further. So you got to watch a little bit closer as you're backing out. And those are some of the components that do fit into the stop control, or the need for stop control in that area is pedestrian safety, which has been another, that was one of the things that kind of drove some of the initial study and, and review of the traffic flow through downtown is some of the accidents that have occurred there in the more recent years. So looking at all of that information, it's, it is certainly within the guidelines to beg those, and I would suggest we beg them for at least a year, let the community get used to it. We'll put up temporary, you know, this, this resolution here would authorize temporary stop signs. A year from now, we'd have to come back and decide whether we want to make that code and put in permanent stop signs. The temporary will look just like permanent. We'll probably initially start with four-way flash. We'll go to four-way flash for about a week, and then we'll put the stop signs in, up in there, probably have them in orange barrels just to create more attention. And then, after about two weeks of that, we'll post-mount them so that they would basically look like a permanent stop sign. That would be the approach. Again, these are non-warranted signals, and so just the fact that we have non-warranted signals can lead to questions of why are we, why do we have a non-warranted signal in I'd answer any questions that you might have around the process or the traffic, traffic analysis?
Who initiated this?
I think it was really initiated as a function of several conversations. Traffic volumes and speeds through downtown, pedestrian safety downtown, bicycle safety When the traffic study came back showing the traffic counts and the volumes, I recognized right away that they didn't meet the warrants to have a signal there. So with, with those various conversations going on, you know, we discussed, should we, should we do a beg? And beg them for a year and see if, as a community, we can adjust to that.
So is that safer for pedestrians crossing the street without the signs there?
Yes.
Is it safer?
Yes. That is, in fact, one of the, one of the...
Is there any doubt here that we have five people here downtown?
One of, yeah. One of the all-stop warrants that, that has met is, you know, the needs for pedestrians at the, at the crossings to be able to see oncoming traffic. And so with the all-stop, as vehicles learn that they're required to stop in the downtown area, it's, it's a safer crossing for pedestrians.
Will there be a, I'm sorry, wait.
No, go ahead.
Will there be a stop sign in the middle on the island as well as on its side? Because there's times when you'll see the stop sign on the...
That's very, very likely that that'll happen. We'll, we'll need to assess that here while we, before we implement this. The plan would be that we would go to a four-way flash and install the temporary signs on a Friday after, after the work rush, allow people to have the weekends to get used to that, and then they would be able, when rush hour started Monday morning, you know, hopefully enough people are aware of that, that it's not a surprise.
Are the traffic lights still effective, or they're not effective at all anymore?
Are they effective?
Do they stop traffic?
They do.
Do they let traffic go?
They do. If you're on the side street, you stop traffic for thirty, forty-five seconds while there's no vehicles crossing.
But, but in addition to that, Steve, there's at least a button for a pedestrian to push.
There is a button.
And you have a walking signal, stopped traffic to use, where you don't have that with a stop sign.
You, you don't, but a four-way stop is actually safer. If you're amongst the blind community, you prefer a four-way stop controlled intersection versus a signal-controlled intersection.
I find that, yeah. Matter of opinion, I guess, mine is the disagreement. I think if it was a, a sounding signal like we have at some of ours, for a blind person, they'd at least know which way they can go and that they can go and traffic is stopped.
If they work, I'd say a lot of them don't, don't work.
It does seem like that.
Well, then, we need to fix it if they don't work.
It does seem like that would be the, the natural reaction to that, but it, I mean, that is well documented, and if you were, and I have had conversation with the blind community leading into this, and without prompting, the answer was, I prefer the four-way stop. It's easier for me to cross.
How does, this is just out of curiosity then, how does a blind person know they're at a four-way stop?
I'm not a hundred percent sure of that answer.
Or at least you have a button and a possible, I know those don't have the sounding signal, but...
I think they learn it, and then they learn that that's stop controlled.
I think the one advantage after listening to Steve's explanation is that every car has to stop, to where if you got a green light, everybody just goes. So I mean, I can see where it would be safer and slow down traffic.
At, at this point, at Second, Third, it's almost, it, I won't say it's a continuous green, but it's almost continuous green.
Right.
I mean, it, it is not stopping traffic on Norfolk Avenue very often. I mean, I've sat at that light at Third, waiting to cross north for, I don't know, I've thought that is, there's something wrong with it before, because it's, it's so slow. This, I, to the question about how was this initiated, and really, going back a year, some of these discussions, as Steve mentioned, looking at Brosh, looking at how traffic flows downtown, making downtown more pedestrian safe, more safe for pedestrians, and encouraging walkability, this is one of the things that happens in downtowns when you do that. You take out stoplights and you put in stop signs at intersections that don't warrant them. So with both, neither, the volumes warrant traffic signals, and I think this is a way for us to calm traffic, slow traffic, make walking in downtown safer. And that is important because downtown has become much busier and much more active and with many more pedestrians than there was four or five years ago when we tried this.
With the increased traffic, then, well, pedestrian traffic light, are we stopping at Third Street while we're going to Fifth Street?
We did study Fifth as well. Right now, the traffic volumes and turn movements meet the necessary warrants for traffic control. To remove that, the level of service would drop to an F in that intersection during those peak times, so I would not recommend that.
Well, we did this already once, a few years ago, and it wasn't real popular. I remember fielding phone calls about it, and, and when we started talking about it, I was, yeah, that's a great idea, let's give it a try, because it'd already been like that because of the Christmas tree. And then we took the Christmas tree down, and we were like, hey, let's leave it and see what happens. And the phone calls I fielded were people were nervous. At that time, Paul Lins was there, and people were nervous about dropping and picking up kids. They didn't like the fact that they could, there was no stoplight there, so. And I do remember the comment being said at that meeting, that sometimes things look great on paper, and maybe don't, aren't as good when they're, you know. I'm just, I'm just telling you what, rewind six years ago, that was exactly what...
I remember that too. I also remember the conversation about Fourth and Brosh, when, according to some people, the world was going to end, when we took out the, the signals.
And you were...
And now, the only thing I hear is that works much better, and it does function much better.
I would agree with you on that. I was one who was thinking the sky might know, but I, you're right, that is nice, that four-way stop.
And that's, and that's why I think it's important that, and those conversations are still going to happen, you're going to get calls. And I think it's important to get down the road. I, I really suggest we go twelve months and get through all four seasons, and then we reassess it next, next July.
I think flashing stop signs, let people really know they're there. I witness occasionally people trying to make that light, going either direction, whether you're going north, south, or east, west. And to me, that's a little problematic, given the foot traffic has picked up down there. And, so, yeah, I think, I don't think, and chief, I don't know, maybe you can tell me, people don't necessarily run stop signs, but they will try to run through yellow lights and, and that kind of thing. I mean, I know it happens, but...
Right. You're, you're right, when they, when they have the yellow, they try to beat the yellow compared to a stop sign. Either they will or won't stop. If, if they're not going to stop, they're not going to stop. Regularly, you see the yellow lights where people are trying to beat it.
Yeah.
The, Steve, you mentioned conversation with downtown business owners and DNA and VPD, the feedback from those property owners and that...
In those conversations over probably the last twelve to eighteen months, I, I haven't received one negative response to the concept. I'm not going to say that every business downtown is, you know, at those meetings, but we continually repeated that conversation and had that over multiple, multiple meetings with various folks in attendance, businesses in attendance, and they were supportive.
One question, maybe you can help with this too. Okay, so, a lot of times, when you park on Norfolk Avenue and then you're trying to back out, it's kind of a bear because, you know, the traffic's moving through there. And then you get the red light, and then no traffic's coming your way, and you got ample time to back up and, and leave. Now, explain to me how that works with a four-way stop, because it's, you know, even like Josh was talking about Brosh, which I do agree is better now. You do stop, and then you go, but you're moving pretty quick. You move through there fairly quick, in my opinion. I mean, I'm not speeding, but I'm only stopped, and I'm going, you know, is that going to mean it's going to be harder to back up with traffic moving down the street? Or do you think you'd get the brakes you need?
You're going to get, you're going to, there's going to be, you're not going to get, per se, as long of, of a, of a space in, in those vehicles as you do with a stop or traffic signal control, but you're going to get more brakes that are adequate for you to get out.
Because like, right now, I'm in a truck, so I can see over the vehicle, and I can see the cars coming. But I've been down there in a car before, and I'm stopped, I can't see anything, but I can see the red light. So when I see the red light going, I have a chance to creep out and look and check.
You're going to get a two, you're going to get a two to three-second gap in there, and that's going to be plenty of time for you to pull out and give that person behind you enough time to, to slow down or stop. And they're going to be anticipating the stop, so they won't be moving as fast.
My best guess would be that the average miles per hour will go down if there's stop signs there.
Yes. Average speed will drop, I would say, ten percent through there, and you will see some, you'll see a traffic shift. You know, the good news is around that, the DOT is just finishing up their traffic counts around town. We also have the ability to count at First and Norfolk as well. And so by doing this, we can kind of go back in a, in a year and do some new counts if we need to, and just see how traffic may have changed.
Realistically, this feels more like a, a two-way stop. You know, I, I think your north and south traffic on Second and Third probably isn't that heavy, so I think you are going to get a lot of, you're just going to have east and west using this stop sign a little bit more, I, in my opinion, but, so I don't know about that window when it comes to backing up. I think you're going to have someone stop, and they're going to look across the road because they're, they're not going to have, we're not going to wait for four, four cars to turn. Very, very seldom.
Yeah. You will be going slow, the, the speed is going to, the reduced speed coming off that stop sign with everybody moving through, whether they're left turns, right turns, or the through traffic coming through there, you're going to be coming through slower, and so they'll create that two to three-second gap in there.
I know you mentioned twelve months, and you like to see all four seasons, but is this something, if it did pass, we'd maybe take a look at six months from now, just to...
We sure can.
Get a pulse on, on what the downtown, what the feel is, maybe?
The only thing with that, though, is I think we missed the, missed the busy month, you know, the summer months when people, you're going to get this summer, maybe this fall, but then winter, you're not going to have as much foot traffic. You know, it's like we should have done, the study was going to happen, once you want to start at March or something like that, instead of at the end of the season.
Well, for six months, we still get three of summer and three of winter. And, you know, we can keep it a year. I was just looking at a potential of...
Yeah. It's, it's easy to come, easy to come back in six months and have a conversation and decide whether we want to let it run another six or...
I think we'd get some feedback from PD as well, if it was, if it proved to be a problem, I think we're going to know about it really quickly.
We'd be able to identify that relatively quick, I think.
Chief, is that, we're talking about analysis and statistics, but is, in your experience, do stop signs slow traffic compared to signals?
In this environment, it'll definitely slow the traffic on Norfolk Avenue. As mentioned, the north-south traffic is usually going to be at a red anyway, so I don't know that you're going to see much of an effect on that, but you'll definitely see a slower traffic on Norfolk Avenue.
Which...
Based on experience, not the study.
Yeah, sure. Which, over the last year or two, that's the main concern I've heard from businesses and people who regularly travel downtown, is that traffic, traffic is moving too quickly to be safe.
Sure.
For everybody on Norfolk Avenue. So I think we have to keep in mind that this stretch of street is not meant to necessarily be a major thoroughfare and move people quickly from here to there. We want people to go slow. We want people to be aware of their surroundings, because you have a lot of intermixing of pedestrians and, and motorists. And that's, that's not going to go away. That's only going to increase, most likely, over the next few years.
And it's, it isn't intentional, I mean, we're, we're, we are intentionally wanting traffic to shift a little bit, and that's why you do this as a community.
Where would that be, where's that shift going to go? What I mean, realistically, for your east-west traffic?
Well, Brosh and Madison. I mean, or if it's the trucks or the larger stuff, they might use the truck routes more if, if it's a large truck, they want to avoid those stop signs, but I would anticipate pedestrian traffic would maybe go up to Brosh or Madison if they're in system and going through that area.
And that's why I mentioned the traffic studies that are, you know, the traffic council that have just been done by the DOT is, you know, we can go back out there and re-loop and see where traffic has moved.
Someone asked, someone not familiar... Someone asked, someone not familiar with Norfolk asked me the other day if we had an outdoor mall. I said, yeah, we do. It's called downtown, because that's essentially what it's become with the mix of retail and restaurants and other offerings down there. And when you look at outdoor malls, you don't put a major stretch of highway in between them. A real advantage, I think, our downtown has is that it's not Lincoln, like Oak Street, where you have four lanes of traffic down the middle separating all these businesses. You want, I think, to have that, you have, you have a way for people to get there in a car, but it's slow, and everybody's paying attention, and you want to promote walk, walking and pedestrian safety as much as possible. I think that's good for all the businesses. I think it's good for everybody traveling downtown. It's not like going to the shifting discussion that you couldn't, if you're, if your major intent is to get from here to there as quickly as possible, you're probably going to go on Madison, or maybe Brash, to get where you're going. So, any other questions or discussion?
We got, I got a couple, I guess. Steve, are those stoplights adjustable at all? I mean, there's some discussion of that, you can go through all of them. My experience is there's usually been enough traffic, you do not make it through every single stoplight. That's personal experience. But are they even adjustable to...
They are.
Change your timing some, and why don't we experience that rather than this?
If you, if we, if we have unwarranted signals, I would really suggest we get unwarranted signals out of our system. Would they just, they really shouldn't be there.
Guess that doesn't necessarily answer it.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Chief, I guess I got an, I got another one on, on traffic. And again, my personal experience is 20 mile an hour is usually what I'm, I mean, it's since a condensed area, and there's a lot of traffic, in my opinion, that, you, I mean, personally, I just don't see speeding. And so, do you happen to run across that many speeders going down Norfolk Avenue? Because I, I can't even recall somebody being pulled over.
Sure. The thing about the downtown, or a lot of areas, is when you see a car go by in front of you, it looks like it's going faster than if you're meeting it. And with the downtown area and the amount of traffic that we have, we occasionally get a speeder, but if you see them, we can't get to them because we're stuck in the same environment. So, you see them go by and, you know, unless it's at night when there's not traffic, our ability to catch up to them is difficult. Directly to your question, we don't see a lot of speeders, but we do see some. I mean, you'll, probably more than speeders, is you'll see people who are wanting to hear their exhaust bounce off the buildings, where they'll accelerate and they'll listen to...
That happens a lot.
They'll listen to that. It sounds like they're speeding. It's more they're getting on, you know, accelerating quickly and making noise, and, which is also part of the problem. But, you know, the, the ability to speed in that environment is difficult. So...
So, to your point, having extra stop signs doesn't help us on that sound or, their sound issue. Now, they're purposely stopping.
There's cause and effect, but...
Obviously, I have a hard time with this. It's...
But to answer your question, yes, they, they are programmable. There's a controller in there that controls the system. They're not looped, so they don't know when you're there. They're just, they're just timed. They're a hard time signal system.
I will note, too, that, that council has, at least at subcommittee level, has discussed this, and this was forwarded as a recommendation from a subcommittee, I don't know, less than two months ago? Is that correct? Four to six weeks ago?
July.
End of July, okay. Not that long ago. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I guess we're talking a lot about, you know, Norfolk Avenue not being the thoroughway through town, and we're talking more about moving people onto like Madison and Brash. You know, I, obviously, West Norfolk Avenue, you get that quite a bit, you know, because it's pretty easy to get from A to B, and then you maybe would turn and head, you know, south on Seventh Street. But then, when you get to Madison, that intersection is a son of a, is, is, is a tough intersection in the mornings in any busy time of the day because it's hard to turn out onto Madison because it's so, so busy. So, I'll, so I understand what you're saying, you know, when you're, if you're going to turn off Seventh Street onto Madison Avenue and use Madison Avenue to go the west way to First Street. This is kind of what we're talking about doing, you know. So, that intersection there, if we're talking about moving people, we're going to create more congestion at that intersection, which is already kind of a bad intersection anyway, in my opinion.
I don't disagree with that. The thing I will say is that if you're coming from the west going east, that outside lane ends, and then you'd go south on Eighth Street and so to Seventh. So, that would, that could help alleviate some of that out of habit. I think a lot of people are going to go to Seventh.
A lot of people turn on 12th, 12th Street and go to Madison, you know, at...
Sure.
That's another one that...
But, you know, if people utilize some of the other streets, that, that can help take the pressure off, and some of that's, you know, a learning curve and just seeing if people utilize that. But you're, I mean, you're right, Seventh and Madison can be a very busy intersection at times.
Yeah. I don't know if we were going, if we're going to, if we should start addressing those intersections, you know, if we're trying to move traffic off of Norfolk Avenue.
Well, Seventh and Madison doesn't need to be addressed, but, you know, I don't, I don't know, we need to do that on, on top of this. This is, I think, a standalone conversation in terms of the, the begging and, and stopping for a while.
Any further questions or comments, or discussion, Council? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
It's Arns, Merrill, McCarthy, Jackson voting in opposition. Granquist, Muren, Clausen, and Hildebrand. It creates a tie if the mayor chooses to...
And I will vote yes.
Okay. With mayor breaking the tie in that affirmative vote, resolution 2021-33 is adopted.
All right. Item 31, we look for a motion to consider resolution number 2021-34, adding stop signs at the following intersections: 37th Street and Bradford Avenue, stopping westbound traffic; 37th Street and Michigan Avenue, stopping westbound traffic; and 34th Street and West Omaha Avenue, stopping southbound traffic.
I'd offer for consideration, resolution 2021-34.
Second?
Motion and second. And Chief Miller, some background on this, please.
I might be wrong, but I think this will be a little bit simpler to explain.
Okay.
Due to the addition of the Bradford Business Park, they added a couple of roads into that business district. And to control the traffic, a couple of the roads exit onto Main Thoroughfares being South 37th Street and West Norfolk Avenue. So, this resolution places stop signs at those intersections on 37th Street and, and West Omaha Avenue so that you don't have vehicles going on, through those intersections onto a busy thoroughfare.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Chief, would you say stop signs work?
Sure don't warn a stoplight. Any questions or comments, other questions or comments, Council on this? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2021-34 is adopted.
All right. And that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned.